Under Article 11, I have a motion that the town raise and appropriate $128,802,786 for the fiscal 2024 budget for the town of Westford, along with certain other appropriations as printed in your motions booklet. Is there a second to the motion? We'll now hear from Town Manager Kristin Lass on the state of our community.
Thank you so much for coming back after lunch, as we have some important business to take care of this afternoon. As the tradition has held, I'd like to give a few brief slides of the state of the town as occurred over the past year since your last annual town meeting. And would like you to know that there are more detailed slides on the town website under the annual town meeting link. But sticking to the moderator's request, we'll be sticking to less than six minutes on this presentation. Also wanted to direct your attention to the Town Manager newsletter. I am continuing that tradition that the past town manager had put in place. So I've put out two newsletters for February and March, so please review those if you'd like. And also, Westford Cat is continuing to tape a town manager update video-wise as well, and that one out last week as well. So looking forward to hearing any feedback that you might have on that. Just wanted to start the budget discussion with setting the standards and setting where we are related to some demographics and population. I'm not going to read through everything, as I know you can access this on your own. But the population has increased in town by over 10% since the 2010 census. This is the 2020 census information. Just over 24,000 population. We have over 18,000 registered voters in town. We talked about the median value of the single-family home in previous articles. The income is over $160,000 per household, and the unemployment rate remains lower than the state and the federal government. Wanted to give the town meeting members an update on where the town of Westford tax rate stands in relation to our area and comparable communities. We remain lower than most of our area communities who have a single tax rate. And the town of Littleton is above the town of Westford when it comes to a split tax rate. And this is for fiscal year 23. There are several opportunities that the town is working for towards economic development initiatives. Later, under Article 19, you'll hear the Land Use Department and the Planning Board speak to the commercial recreation amendments that they're looking to make to the zoning bylaw to allow for Kimball's and Neshoba Valley to increase their commercial recreation. Some of you may have heard about the MBTA communities and the state mandate for us to require certain zoning related to that. And there will be future town meetings and future public outreach related to this that zoning will come forward to you in the annual town meeting next year. Finally, related to economic development and growth, this is not all-encompassing, but the Planning and Planning Board and Department of Land Use are looking to streamline permitting to allow for businesses to go through a process that is perhaps less onerous, but still has the same review to attract businesses within the town of Westford. As you're probably aware from being residents in the town, the residential development in town still continues to grow. These are just a few of the projects. We detail them a lot more on the website, so I will not go through them in detail. But these projects listed here are either near completion, under construction, or through permitting and moving forward to construction soon. The town meeting did authorize earlier today an additional $1 million for the Town Farm Road project, which the Select Board awarded on the contract of choice. I actually was out on the site on Wednesday with a site visit to DHCD regarding their financing for that project to be redeveloped into 35 mixed-income units for 62 in age group and above, and the home to the new Worcester Food Pantry, which I know is currently at the basement of the Cameron Senior Center. We're currently under the construction of the new fire training facility in the new location on Orange Village Road as well. This slide gives you an introduction or overview of some of the municipal facilities that we continue to lurk at. We all talked about 51 Main Street a few hours ago. The J.B. Fletcher Library expansion will become underway as the design continues there. There's an outreach for the recreation facility for feasibility regarding aquatics, and reviewing the space needs for the school administration, which I look forward to continuing to work with the school department and the school committee on that. If you're out and about, you understand that the engineering and DPW departments are really always out there working, whether it's plowing in the winter or planning new developments and projects for construction season. Just wanted to bring to your attention that the DPW does have a new Facebook page if you'd like to follow that. They've been posting either road closures or when there's been items ongoing. There's a short list of recently completed items here on this slide. And in 2023 construction season, which will be ramping up very shortly, there'll be Oak Hill Road, Plain Road, and Moore Road infrastructure project, the Beaver Bridge replacement, and there's actually a webpage on the DPW website directly related to that, as I know it impacts a lot of the town and the town of Littleton as well, the increase of the Carlisle Road sidewalk, and the fire training facility. And then you'll hear more about the Boston Road reconstruction, the town hall parking lot we talked about earlier, Plain Road sidewalk extension, and Littleton Road widening. We wanted to give an update to the town meeting related to the federal funding we've received related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And this chart lists out all the buckets of funding that the town has received, from the CARES Act, FEMA recovery, ARPA funds that the Select Board is still reviewing, and then the school funding, SR2 and SR3. And this slide lays out the ARPA funding allocation. The town has received all of the $7.4 million allocated through the federal government, and they have spent or have allocated those fundings for $5.5 million. And we will be looking for input in the next use of like board meetings related to future funding to spend all the other funds down. And I just want to highlight, because I think this is really important before we go into the budget discussion, that the town of Westford has been extremely successful in offsetting your budget through the tax levy with other various state, local, and federal grants. To date for fiscal year 23, $8.9 million in grants have been obtained by the town. So I'd like to congratulate the staff and the boards and the commissions who have gone out there and done that. This is a huge amount of work. Grants are not always free. There's always legwork and paperwork and processing, but this is a huge amount of money as it relates to our overall town budget. So just want to give a few slides leading up to the budget discussion that the moderator will leave lead. New revenue for fiscal '24 is $1.69 million. You'll see the fixed costs that are alluded to, and then the remaining debts. The town allocation of those new funds for the fiscal '24 budget, 28%. We've allocated 72% of the new funds to the school budget, so you'll see that later on as well. We're proud to present a balanced budget to town meeting. I'd like to congratulate the team who have done all the work. I cannot take any credit for it. I'd just like to present that to you today. There was an immense amount of work with the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, and other boards and commissions. We were working till the final hour, really, to come out with a state budget that was delayed because of the new governor. So just would like to congratulate all the teamwork associated with that. The overall budget increases were 1.5%, and you'll see the layouts there. And we're proud to say that we're still maintaining our AAA bond rating, which goes back to a question that was asked earlier about our interest rates, and that is really wonderful for the town. Non-budget related, but just want to, you know, say kudos to the town of Westford for all of these rankings that are in national or state publications. It really allows people to be proud of the town that they live in and highlight that. And then finally, just would like to thank everyone again, town meeting members, department heads, board and commission members, volunteers, and residents. We would not be the community that we are today without you all. So thank you so much. Thank you for your time, and we can move on to the meeting of the article.
Thank you, Kristin. Okay, here's how we'll go about voting for the budget. As you can see, if you look at page 10 of your motions booklet, each department or category of our town government is listed, followed horizontally across the page by five columns. The numbers we'll be working with are the bolded totals in the third column labeled FY 2024 TM for Town Manager and FinCom Recommend. These are the numbers you're being asked to vote on. I'll read through the list of departments along with the totals for each, and if you have a question on any of them, again, please say "hold," and we'll discuss that item separately or get your question answered. Otherwise, we'll vote on items to which no hold was raised or for which any questions have been answered as a group. All items require a majority vote to pass. Before we get to page 10, please look at page nine of your motions booklet, and there you will see eight items in the budget, which are listed separately from the rest of the budget because they are either partially or entirely funded by sources other than this year's tax dollars. We'll vote on those items first. I'll now read through them. Please say "hold" if you have any questions or wish to make a comment on any particular From the general fund, $100,000 shall be appropriated from overlay surplus. Under general fund, $625.44 shall be appropriated from fund balance designated for debt exclusion Under community preservation fund, $1,120,491 shall be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund fiscal 2024 revenue. From town revolving funds, $3,000 shall be appropriated from the senior center fitness room revolving $53.55. From Water Enterprise Fund, $4,813,234 shall be appropriated from the Water Enterprise revenue. Under Recreation Enterprise Fund, $952,200 shall be appropriated from Recreation Enterprise revenue. $150,000 shall be appropriated from Recreation Enterprise retained earnings, and $263,227 shall be raised and appropriated. The Ambulance Enterprise Fund, $850,000 shall be appropriated from Ambulance Enterprise revenue. $50,000 shall be appropriated from Ambulance Enterprise retained earnings, and $605,371 shall be raised and appropriated. Under Stormwise Enterprise Fund, $815,209 shall be appropriated from Stormwater Enterprise revenue, and $600,000 shall be raised and appropriated. Okay, let's vote on the ones that have no holds first, and then we'll go to the item that has a hold. All right. You know what? I don't think I made a...I got a second. Oh, yes, I did. Somebody second the budget article. Thank you. Okay. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the items I just read that had no holds on them, please say "aye." All those opposed, please say "nay." These pass unanimously. Can the person who had the hold on the general fund $625.44?
Uh, Bob Carter, 8 Nutting Road. Is this a typo? This is the only number in the whole book that's got cents. I mean, it just jumps out at me. Were we accurate to the penny?
That is correct. This is the remaining balance in that fund, so this is the last time you'll see this appropriation.
Okay. Okay, I'm good.
All right. All those in favor of the general fund allocation of $625.44 to be appropriated from funds and balance designated for debt exclusion reduction, please say "aye." All those opposed, please say "nay." That also passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to page 10. So again, I'm going to read through, and if you have a hold, please just say loudly from your seat. Under general government, Select Board, $28,559. Town Manager, $539,565. Finance Committee... Okay, can you wait till I read the number? Finance Committee, $128,671. Now, somebody have a hold on that? Okay. Finance Department, $167,710. Town Accountant, $372,817. Board of Assessors, $363,627. Treasurer Collector, $350,141. Legal Services, $100,000. Human Resources, $24,376. Technology, $983,284. Town Clerk, $312,793. Sorry? Did somebody say "hold" that I didn't hear? Nobody's owning up to that. Okay. Human Resources...I'm starting three back. Human Resources, $524,376. I didn't hear anything. Technology, $983,284. Town Clerk, $312,793. Permitting Department, $338,916. Conservation Commission, $100,394. Planning Board, $118,678. Zoning Board of Appeals, $2,595. Town Hall Maintenance, $102,242. Public Buildings and Properties Maintenance, $238,760. Yes? Kate?
I think the mic...is the microphone...yeah. Kate Hollister, 25 Island Brook Road. I don't have a hold on anything. I just want to give recognition to the general town staff for the great services they do. They never get credit for what they do. When we moved to town a while ago, schools were maybe 50% of the budget. Now they're up to 72% of the budget. So I just want people to appreciate what the stress that has put on the rest of the town staff. They don't have the resources that they need to do a lot of things, and they've been trying to do. This is my personal plug. But I just want to give them a shout-out. Everybody always says how good the schools are, but they never acknowledge the great work that all the other departments do.
Thank you, Kate. Continuing, under Public Safety, $6,423,794. Public Safety Communications, $932,606. Fire Department, $4,384,214. Building Department, $424,739. Sealer of Weights and Measures, $15,524. Emergency Management, $12,150. Animal Control, $46,929. Tree Warden, $43,060. I'm going to stop there. Let's take a vote on everything that did not have a hold. So I have a hold on Town Manager and Finance Committee. Is there anybody that had a hold that I missed? Do you have a hold, Alicia? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Go to the microphone, please.
I really didn't want to ask to hold. I just didn't understand where legal expenses went.
Okay, so are you putting a hold on legal services?
Sure, thank you.
All right. So we've got a hold on Town Manager, Finance Committee, and Legal Services. Otherwise, we're going to vote the rest of those items that I just read. Requires a majority vote. All in favor of everything except for those three that had a hold, please say "aye." All opposed, please say "nay." Those pass unanimously. Okay, let's go back to Town Manager. Will the person who had the hold on the Town Manager budget item, please approach the microphone? Dennis?
Madam Honor, Dennis Calvin, 90 Conker Road, on the Finance Committee. I just wanted an explanation under the Town Manager budget. We just, towards the end of our session, there was an addition of a sustainability coordinator to the Town Manager budget, and I wanted to get an explanation from Dan O'Donnell, what the role of this particular position is going to be and how is it funded?
Okay. So, Dan?
Specifically, whether any ARPA funds were utilized to fund it.
What is the position? How is it funded? And specifically, whether there are any ARPA funds being used? Kristin Lass.
Thank you. Just for history, the Sustainability Coordinator position was funded for fiscal year 23 with the town of Carlisle out of a state-community compact grant. Recently, the Select Board held a public meeting where they discussed the Sustainability Coordinator position, and they have decided to fund that position partially out of the operating budget and partially out of ARPA, understanding that ARPA money will be going away in the future, and we do need to work to get that money under the operating budget. Now I'll let Dan give the details of the percentages and the dollar amounts if necessary.
So within the operating budget for that position, we have $43,067, and the Select Board did appropriate $18,457 from ARPA.
Does that answer your question, Dennis? Or are you...
No, it does. And I just want to advise the town meeting that I want to go back to Jordi Ross's 2022 budget statement. She wanted everybody to be very cautious about funding positions through ARPA, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
All right. Seeing no further questions or comments on this article, we have the Town Manager budget of $539,565. All in favor, please say "aye." All opposed, say "nay." It passes. It is not unanimous. Will the person who had the hold on the next item, Finance Committee, $128,671? Yes, sir?
Uh, Bob Carter, 8 Nutting Road. I get an explanation for the reserve fund here, and it appears $125,000 might be a little generous if it wasn't used at all during fiscal year '22.
Okay.
So for the reserve fund, we did use this early on in the year, and we replenished the balance at the October special town meeting. In their March meeting, the Finance Committee actually funded $33,000 for technology expenses, so remaining balance is around $92,000 or so at this point. So we do use this throughout the year as a funding source for emergencies or unexpected expenses that come up. It's really our only mechanism besides calling the town meeting to fund an item that wasn't budgeted.
So this can be used for anything that's unbudgeted, and then the Finance Committee doesn't have to come back to town meeting?
That's correct. It's a reserve fund at the FinComs disposal.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions on that item, everyone in favor of the Finance Committee line item of $128,671, please say "aye." Those opposed, say "nay." Passes unanimously. The next item is Legal Services, $100,000. Will the person with the question on Legal Services...Alicia, did you just want to know what that's for?
No, I was trying to understand the negative $40,000 appalling here. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. Why is it such a drop?
What...Dan, can you explain the difference between column four and column...I'm sorry, column three and column four?
No, no, I understand the difference for the columns. I'm just trying to understand why such a drop?
So when forming the budget, we always look back at the past few fiscal years, and we've been using legal less and less over the past couple of years. So right now, we're on pace for about $90,000 for general council for the year. So we thought we could use those funds elsewhere when developing the budget for FY '24.
Does that answer your question? Okay, seeing no further questions or comments on that item, all in favor of Legal Services, budget amount of $100,000, please say "aye." All opposed, say "nay." Passes unanimously. All right. Continuing on page 12 of your booklet. And again, I'll read through, and please say "hold" if you have any questions. Under Education, Westford Public Schools, $65,889,564. Neshoba Tech, $1,396,89. Under Public Works, the Department of Public Works, $269,918. Engineering, $343,433. Highway Department, $2,449,970. Recycling, $602,525. Solid Waste, $1,538,654. Waste Water Treatment Management, $243,404. Continuing, under Health and Human Services, Board of Health, $468,649. Council on Aging, $613,45. Veterans Services, $121,399. Under Culture and Recreation, Library, $1,825,230. Parks and Grounds, $506,214. Land Management, $98,356. Historical Commission, $13,450. Okay, I'm going to stop there again. I have two holds, one for the Cemetery Department and one for Parks and Grounds. Did I miss any holds? All right, let's vote on all the other items except for those two. All in favor of all other items just read except for Cemetery Department and Parks and Grounds, please say "aye." All opposed, please say "nay." Passes. It is not unanimous. Let's go back to the Cemetery Department. Will the person...is it you that has a hold? Great.
Jocelyn Bishop, 27 E. Groton Road. I actually have the same question for both of my holds, which were for the cemetery and then also the parks and grounds.
Okay.
There's significant increases. I'm not debating the amounts necessarily, but when you look at a 48% increase and a 70...almost 72% increase, I'd like to understand what those increases are for.
Okay, Steve Cronin, Director of Public Works.
So in the past, the Parks and Grounds and Cemetery staff have been partially funded in the Parks and Grounds and Cemetery budget and partially funded in the Highway Department's budget. We recently reorganized the DPW in Parks and Grounds and Cemetery, now under the DPW umbrella, and we're just funding those salaries entirely in their respective budgets. So you'll see a corresponding decrease in the Highway Department's budget for those increases.
Thank you. So when you look at the year-over-year increase in total, if you take it away from the DPW and you put it to their own bucket, what would that increase be? Does that make sense?
Dan has taken out his phone calculator to figure that out. I feel like he should be able to do it in his head. No pressure.
So, the overall increase for the Cemetery, Highway, and Parks and Grounds budget is $19,814. It's a minimal increase.
Okay, so a very, very tiny percentage.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Were there any other questions on Cemetery Department? Or, let's vote it separately. So, all in favor of the Cemetery Department budget item $194,374, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Passes unanimously. And were there any other questions on Parks and Grounds? All right, all in favor of the Parks and Grounds item of $506,214, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. All right, starting on page 14. Under Debt Service, $4,326,575. Under Unclassified, Otherwise Unclassified, negative $1,632,835. Employee Benefits and Miscellaneous, $10,351,268. Transfers to and from Trusts, $11,907,528. Under Community Preservation Fund, $1,120,491. Under the Water Enterprise Fund, $4,813,234. Under Recreation Enterprise Fund, $1,365,527. And under the Ambulance Enterprise Fund, $1,505,371. And finally, under the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, $1,415,209. Seeing no holds or questions on those items, all in favor of what I just read, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. All line items have now been voted, and any questions have been answered. We now need a final vote approving the budget as a whole, or so Town Council tells me. All in favor of the motion under Article 11 that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $128,802,786 for the operation and maintenance of town departments for the fiscal year July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, as set forth in your motions booklet, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. We voted on Article 12 in the consent agenda, so we're now moving to Article 13. Under Article 13, I have a motion that the town transfer $31,453 from the Water Enterprise Other Post-Employment Stabilization Fund to the Water Enterprise Expenses Account to pay for fiscal year '24 retiree benefits. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, this motion also requires a two-thirds majority to pass, so we'll use our clickers. Remember, when I tell you the vote is open, if you want to vote aye, press the green button to vote nay, press the red button. Okay, the voting is now open. See how much better you've gotten at this? I feel like a lot of people just came for the food truck. All right, voting is, everybody all set with their voting? Voting is now closed. And the motion passes. The vote is 210 to 3. So, Articles 14, 15, and 16 were voted with the consent agenda, so we're moving on to Article 17. Under Article 17, I have a motion to authorize the Select Board to accept easements for the Boston Road Reconstruction Project in, on, under, and over certain parcels of land abutting and/or near Boston Road and Crown Road for the reconstruction and relocation of the roadway, sidewalks, and other structures related thereto, all as shown on a plan dated January 3rd, 2023, and filed with the town clerk. Is there a second to the motion? Are there any questions or comments? We actually discussed Boston Road before, so, okay. This is a simple majority, so all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. This is my favorite article. We're at Article 18. Under Article 18, we have a motion to change the start time for annual town meeting as it appears in our town bylaws from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Is there a second to this motion? So, during the pandemic, we met at this earlier time, and it had the obvious effect of allowing us to end earlier. Duh. I'm told by Town Council that under Mass. General Laws, the Select Board has the authority to make this time change on their own at any time. However, enshrining it in a bylaw provides more notice to you, the voters, and allows for better long-term planning. Are there any questions or comments on this article? All right, seeing none, this requires a simple majority. Oh, oh. Oh, George. Hi, George.
George Murray, 14 Haywood Road. My question is this, whose ox is getting gored by deletion of the last paragraph?
George, can I ask you to repeat that a little closer to the microphone?
Yes, I'm sorry. Whose ox is getting gored by deletion of the last sentence of this? We've always, I think, avoided Easter week, but are there other religious holidays for other faiths that are going to get stepped on by the fact that we don't want to pay attention to that?
No, it really, it really was for simplicity purpose, and Greg, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The Select Board has the authority to do that anyway, and so that, so for simplicity purposes, we wanted to change the time so everybody knows that this is the new time it's going to happen all the time. If there was a religious holiday to fall on that day, the Select Board would still have the authority to change, change the day as a result.
Then what's the purpose of deleting the requirement that they pay attention to that?
Does it? You mean, because it says at such other date and/or time of day as the Select Board deems appropriate. That's, that's right, George. So, that it's specified now in the article, in the bylaw, that the Select Board has the authority to do that. They have the authority to do it under Mass. General Laws anyway. It's not specifically referring to religious holidays, but it's still specified in there that they have the right to do it.
That's not the way this reads. I don't mean to belabor this, but that's not the way that this reads. It says that if they, if it conflicts with a religious holiday, the Select Board may delay it to a subsequent sentence. So, why is it important that we take this wording out, which simply codifies the practice that we've had for 50 or 60 years or more?
Well, the new language gives them more flexibility, not less, but you can certainly make a motion to amend. Let's hear from Town Council.
Thank you, through you, Madam Moderator. So, the purpose of this change is to make it more consistent with the general laws. Under the general laws, the Select Board has the authority to change the date of town meeting regardless of what might be in a charter or bylaw. And the concern with the language that is being crossed out was that it looks like it's a limitation on the authority of the Select Board that they can only postpone town meeting in the event of a religious holiday. And so, the reason for deleting that is that, to recognize that the Select Board has more broad authority than that, and that they can not only postpone town meeting based on a religious holiday, but they can postpone town meeting based on any other reason that they deem appropriate for the town.
Madam Moderator, that is clearly stated in the earlier sentence, at such date or time as the Select Board deems appropriate.
Yes, that language is still in there.
For any length, for any purpose. And so, why do we need to remove what's been in here all these years? Because it may be misinterpreted as that's the only reason that they could change it. It doesn't make any sense to me. I'd recommend, I don't want to oppose the change in time, I think that's fine, but I'd recommend deleting this article. I think it...
Are you making a...
I spent years on the school committee arguing whether Good Friday was a scheduled day or not, and we ought to be very clear as to what it is that we intend to observe and respect in what we tell them.
So, are you making a motion to amend?
No, I'm not amending.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other comments? Yeah?
Eileen Tietro, Oak Road. My pronouns are she and they. So, I'm actually agreeing with George here. It's a little bit ironic that we actually already break the rule because Saturday is a, you know, sacred day for Jews, okay? So, one of the things that I am thinking of here, we already well beyond that, but there may be boards, and I'm not saying this board now, but in the future, where that board may not care so much about other religious holidays, you know, either other, you know, other religions or even Christian holidays, I don't know which. And I do think that we should, I am asking that we, what is the wording again? Amend the, amend the motion to return to including the religious holiday statement.
Okay, I just need you to get that in writing and bring it up. Sarah?
Free Cory Hill Road. I just wanted to note that the previous wording does not require the board to delay the event of a traditional religious holiday. It only says that they may. And so, the new wording, the bold which is being added, does give them the same ability.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion to amend. Is there a second to that motion? Right here, a second? Okay. Oh, sorry.
David Sherrill, 44 Village, you wrote, perhaps I'm here prematurely, but I don't have the words of amendment. And that these words, if included, have no effect?
I'm sorry, you were breaking up up here. Can I ask you to say your question again into the microphone?
Do I understand correctly from the previous discussion and explanation that these words that have been stricken, if included, have no effect?
Yes, I mean, that's, I'll let Town Council answer that. Okay, we have a motion to amend on the floor, so if you can refrain from moving the question until we get through that, I'd appreciate it. Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Madam Moderator. That is correct. It's my opinion that these words have no effect.
All right, let's, let's vote the motion to amend. The motion to amend is to reinsert the words that are crossed out in the last sentence of the language as it appears in your motions booklet. If... Is that the motion to amend, I think? It's told for a moment. Yes? Yes, okay, that's correct. To not delete those words that are deleted in your motions book, starting from the word "except." If you are in favor of the motion to amend, to reinsert those words into the bylaw, then you'll vote aye. If you're opposed, you'll vote nay. So, all in favor of the motion to amend, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion to amend fails. I did hear a motion to move the question. Does anybody have any more questions or comments they want to make? Okay, if not, we can dispense with the motion to move the question and just go right to the vote. So, all in favor of the change to the bylaw as set forth in your motions booklet under Article 18, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes. It is not unanimous. We are now at Article 19. Under Article 19, we have two motions under Article 19, both of which relate to a zoning bylaw change that would expand and create indoor and outdoor commercial recreation and winter commercial recreation zoning. The first motion is that the town amend the relevant sections of the zoning bylaw to establish such a commercial recreation overlay district at Kimball Farm and Neshoba Ski Area. Is there a second to the first motion under Article 19? Jeff Marsette will give us the presentation for this.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There is a yellow handout for the zoning bylaw amendment, if you have that handy. So, the first motion under Article 19 proposes to create a commercial recreation overlay district over Kimball Farm in Neshoba Valley Ski Area. Currently, indoor and outdoor commercial recreation is only permitted in one zoning district, Commercial Highway Zoning District, and with benefit of a special permit. As you can see from the map on page 3, both Kimbels and Neshoba are comprised of multiple parcels of land, and they fall into various zoning districts. Some of it is commercial highway, some of it is industrial highway, and some of it is residence A. So, for them to try to situate commercial recreation into those portions of the property that are not commercial highway, they need extraordinary relief from our zoning, specifically use variances. In use variances, it's difficult to satisfy the criteria to justify the granting of a use variance. Use variances should be granted very sparingly. There's a lot of uncertainty about them, and if they are challenged, they are vulnerable. It is not desirable permitting path. So, the proposed overlay district, it would not take away any existing development rights, but it would allow the possibility of additional development, but only if it could be tied to commercial recreation. So, this isn't open-ended. It would only allow for commercial recreation. It would still require a special permit from the Planning Board of Appeals, which requires a supermajority vote or four out of five. It's called the discretionary permit because the board is not obligated to grant the permit. And the board does have the ability to impose reasonable conditions of approval to ensure that it would not be detrimental to the neighborhood. And for some context, Neshoba Valley Ski Area opened for its first season in 1964, so they've been around a while. And while they're known for their skiing, they also have the Outlook, the Tiki Bar, the Haunted Hay Rides, and Witch's Woods, and some other programming over the years. And Kimball's story goes back even further, to 1939, when Jack Kimball and his wife Clara converted the family woodshed into an ice cream parlor. And of course, they've expanded many times over many years into what they are today. And so, we're trying to, we're trying to help these two iconic businesses. Westford is known far and wide for it. And so, we're trying to help them through this overlay to better plan for a successful future here in Westford. They are facing some challenges like other businesses, from regional competitors to climate change. They're having trouble, some difficulties with attracting and maintaining, retaining employees, particularly that they have many seasonal uses. So, it's been a challenge for them. And so, we think it's worth asking Town Meeting if you would show your support for this amendment and these businesses such that they... and these businesses such that they can have a long future, success, right here in Westford. And so, the Planning Board concluded their public hearing on this article on March sixth, twenty-twenty-three, and they unanimously recommend support of this article. The Select Board also voted for zero to recommend passage of this article. Additionally, the Recreation Commission and the Economic Development Committee unanimously offered their support for this article. And so, we appreciate your consideration, and I'm very happy to try to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Just stay right there. Sarah?
Steve Wojcik, Preservation Way. For reference, I live a mi-, a half mile from the Neshoba Ski Area and a bit over a mile from Kimball Farm. In general, I support this jo-, zoning change. It makes sense. The Kimball's and Fletcher's businesses reflect well on the town. The article as written does not include language as to noise these entities in the zone may generate. As a resident living in the vicinity of both, I ask all involved to consider and take efforts to mitigate the noise that comes from some activities in this zone, especially at night. Kimball's Farms' bumper boats blow a horn I can hear outside my house. It's mostly during the day, no big deal. A bigger item is Neshoba running snow guns through the night. The noise permeates my house, disrupting our sleep. Both venues host events into the night, and both are often loud enough to be heard inside the house. On behalf of my family and other nearby residents, I ask the owners of businesses in this zone to recognize the impact nighttime noise has on the general area and work their best efforts to mitigate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could just offer one comment. Ironically, with this zoning amendment, it's my opinion that the Planning Board would have additional discretion to impose conditions of approval under a special permit as compared to some of the other possible permitting options that have happened today. So, they could actually have more discretion with this amendment, in my opinion.
Thank you, Jeff. Emily?
Emily Teller, nine Texas Road. I'm just curious why the actual motions don't include the words Kimball Farm and Neshoba Valley Ski Area. It's kind of up there as the introduction, but it's not actually in the word of the articles, of the motions.
Well, the, the overlay district itself, if you look at the map, shows that those are the areas that are included. Jeff, do you want to speak to that as well?
So, in zoning, we're tying it to the property. Businesses' names can change over time, so we're focused on the land that the zoning is tied to. And so, that's why we left that.
Thank you. Uh, the microphone to my right, to my left.
Jocelyn Bishop, two-seventy Groton Road. So, um, what happens if either or both of these businesses sell?
I don't think this changes any of that. At any point in time, they could choose to, to close up, sell, whatever the case. All this does is it increases the likelihood that commercial recreation could continue on those properties. Doesn't change anything. It just gives the possibility of commercial recreation as compared to the current zone.
So, it doesn't expand the usage limitations beyond the commercial or recreational?
That is correct.
If they sold to some sort of developer?
They would still, they would still be entitled to all of the development rights under the existing underlying zoning. And if this passes, they would also have the ability to pursue additional development, but only for commercial recreation purposes. It has to be tied to them.
Thank you.
And at the center, Mike?
Alan Martin, thirty-one Meadow Lane. The, the proposed, uh, addition to subsection eight-nine-nine of the zoning bylaws clearly states that the special permit granting authority, uh, may grant a special permit for, uh, additional uses contingent upon, well, that's my word, uh, finding that in addition to all the other criteria, that the proposed use does not cause substantial detriment to the neighborhood after considering noise.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions, we'll call for the vote. This is a two-thirds vote. I need you to use your clickers. Remember, to vote aye, press the green button. To vote no, press the red button. This is the first one. Voting is now open. Everyone all set with their voting? All right, voting is now closed. The motion passes. The vote is two hundred to fifteen.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The second motion under Article nineteen makes specific changes to Appendix A of the zoning bylaw in order to provide for indoor and outdoor commercial recreation and winter commercial recreation in particular existing zoning districts by special permit from the Planning Board. Jeff, can you explain that a little?
Madam Moderator, may I ask a favor before that begins?
Yes.
Um, state statute requires that this meeting here report from the Planning Board before we vote on zoning.
He, he did give-
Jeff Marsette did in fact give that, but he is not, with all due respect, Jeff, he's not the Planning Board. He is their staff member, and I would love to have a member of the Planning Board, the Chair or anyone else who's here, to please be the one who reports to the meeting on this next section as to when their hearing was held, what they deliberated, and what they decided. I think we are, we deserve that, understand all. Thank you.
And I did omit, Madam Moderator, um, the Planning Board's written report is included in the packet. So, I don't, you looking for one more?
No. You can go ahead and make the presentation, and then Mike will give the, uh, Mike, you'll give the report.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, the second motion under Article nineteen proposes to simply expand commercial recreation opportunities throughout more zoning districts. Some of you may recall, um, you may have participated in several, uh, surveys over the last couple of years relative to commercial recreation. The feedback that we've received from those surveys was overwhelmingly in favor of having more opportunities in more districts. And so, the proposal before you seeks to add the Industrial Highway, Industrial A, Industrial B, and Industrial C districts. It would still require a public handing, a public hearing process with the Planning Board. It would still require a special permit. It could still impose conditions of approval, and they still have the opportunity to say no. So, there is a map on page eleven that shows the overall zoning map. And for reference, if you look in the lower left-hand corner, that calls out the districts that are under consideration and the colors, so you can get a general sense of where this might be in town. And the Planning Board did, um, conclude their public hearing also on March sixth.
Let's let, let's let Mike give the planning board.
Sure.
Mike Bonifant, Vice Chair, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Thank you, Mike.
Good afternoon, everybody. Michael Bonifant. Um, we did open a public hearing on this matter on February sixth. We held several meetings. Um, unfortunately, Town came up with the horrible acronym CROD, Commercial Recreation Overlay District. Uh, we did vote on this five to zero to approve, um, this as written. Town has done, Town staff has done a tremendous amount of work on this, and he's well-versed, so that's why we decided to let him come off this presentation. But we're here for any questions.
All right. I don't see any questions or comments. So, again, this requires a two-thirds majority vote. Use your clickers, please. Okay, voting is now open. If you wish to vote yes, press the green button. If you wish to vote no, press the red button. Everyone all set with their voting? All right, voting is closed, and the motion passes, one hundred and ninety-three to seventeen. All right. Article twenty is a citizen's petition, and the lead petitioner has asked to address the meeting, uh, before the motion gets on the floor with a resolution that will help us to both understand and, um, decide on the, on the article. Maria, just introduce yourself, please.
Uh, my name is Maria McCarthy, twenty-nine Forest Road. Before we get to our article, I would like to make a resolution for the Westford, um, Planning Board to work with the Select Board to further study the growth and develop a management strategy for the Route forty Groton Road Corridor. Whereas the town of Westford has experienced a significant level of both residential, commercial, and industrial growth in the last decade, much of that growth has been centered around Route one-ten and Route forty. Whereas this development has increasingly given rise to buffer issues regarding residential zoning and environmental preservation around these areas. Be it therefore resolved that the petitioners of Article twenty and other neighbors in the Groton Road area would like to request that the Planning Board conduct a new evaluation of the current policies regarding buffers between residential, commercial, and industrial properties, sustainable building practices, and the preservation of the environment, including wetlands. The goal is to establish a growth management strategy, update the town master plan, which is, I think, two thousand and nine, for the Route forty corridor specifically. And we'd like to ensure that the policy goals regarding the growth management and the integration of various uses are updated and appropriate for current conditions.
All right. Is there a second to that? Okay. So, we're just discussing this resolution now? Folks at the microphone? Okay. Uh, let's start on my left.
Patrick, Patrick Shields, fifty-one Forest. I moved a question. Motion to move the question.
Okay. Um, so, there are six people at the microphone. I can't ask you to withdraw that, but, but I, I would like to give some folks the courtesy of the questions they might have.
I, I think they're, want to motion the same.
Sorry?
I believe they're mo-, looking to motion the same self, the motion says, motion, motion to move the question.
I can't hear you, Alicia.
It's not on. Alyssa Nikashin, Holzberg Betty Lane. We're just trying to help everybody get home quickly.
So, all you people are up there to move the question? Okay, I only needed one. All right, there's somebody who's not here to move the question. Let's, let's, can we hear from this, this lady first, or? All right. Okay. We have a motion on the floor to move the question. Is there a second to that motion? All right. The motion to move the question takes precedence over any other, uh, questions or comments from the floor. Sorry. So, all in favor of terminating discussion on the resolution and going forward, uh, to vote on the resolution, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay? The motion to move the question does not pass. So, now, we're back to the main motion. May I have your question?
Thank you, yes. Jocelyn Bishop, two-seventy Groton Road. Uh, I haven't heard about this. I live on Groton Road, so I kind of like the sound of where you're going with this, but I think that it would have been helpful to engage all of the neighbors along Groton Road before this gets presented to Town Meeting. And the fact that people are trying to cut out any sort of conversation about this is very troublesome to me.
Thank you. On my right?
Um, thank you, neighbor, for the comments. Um, this did come in front of both the Planning Board and the Select Board, and my neighbors heard some feedback, uh, that suggested the town did not support the next article. So, I think my neighbors are trying to do the right thing in just asking the town to look at the Route forty corridor. I know you're affected, I'm affected. I think this is a great thing. We've spent a lot of time looking at one-ten. It's time to look at Route forty so that we're not getting surprised by more surprises like asphalt plants.
In the center, please.
Steve Wojcik, Preservation Way. I drive this area regularly, uh, in general. I'm s-, in support of this. Um, you, we have two big districts for industry and, uh, other uses, Route one-ten, Route forty. Uh, all that I would ask is there be an item number four, and that would be to, uh, do a study of, of traffic, uh, especially from Depot Road to, uh, to Route three or to the Chelmsford Line.
Could I get somebody from the Planning Board to discuss whether or not this would include a traffic, study of traffic?
Good afternoon, Michael Bonifant. Um, while we haven't, as a Planning Board, discussed this present resolution, we did discuss, um, and I think was unanimous within the Planning Board to support a study of, uh, zoning on Route forty. There have been other parcels that's come before. Town meeting is individual parcels to be zoned differently, uh, a little bit different than the petition that's up here, but Planning Board is supportive of a, of a feasibility study, zoning study of Route forty.
And, and Mike, just to get to the specific question, would that include a study of traffic along Route forty?
I believe it would be in, you know, fully inclusive of traffic and, and zoning.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Okay. Kate?
Kate Hollister, twenty-five Iron Brook Road. I'm a member of the Planning Board, and, uh, yeah, I am in favor of this. A study of Route forty has been on our wish list, along with a long wish list that we have of improvements towards zoning bylaw. And we hear you. We don't have the resources, so I'm appealing to our new town manager and everybody that, uh, everybody wants us to do these studies, but our poor staff is overworked and needs to resource.
Kate, Kate, let's stick to the resolution.
I'm for it. If we have the money to do it.
Thank you. To my right?
Um, Madam Moderator, Gloria Miller, fourteen Hudson's Way, just looking for clarification on behalf of the voters, whether we're discussing the resolution, citizen's petition on the article, or vote-
Nope, we're, we're discussing the resolution.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir?
Jeff Pastor, one-ten Providence Road. I'm still not exactly clear what it is that we're going to be voting on next.
So, what's on the screen right here is the resolution that the lead petitioner for the citizen's petition of Article twenty has asked to put before the Town Meeting before we actually get to Article twenty. So, the resolution that you see up here is what we're voting on now. So, the resolution is just a sense of the meeting that is going to be, um, out there showing what the, what this meeting decided should be done. Do you want to give a better explanation than that, Lynn? No? Okay, John?
I just wanted to, could you clarify? It sounds like this isn't binding, it's just a resolution. I just wanted clarification on that.
It's not binding, that is correct. This is just basically a sense of the meeting, uh, vote.
Owen, Fletcher Road. Um, I say the same thing at every single Town Meeting over I don't know how many years. We can't read that.
Yeah. So, okay. Just, just for the benefit of everyone in the room, all of the, um, slides that were put before you today were vetted for readability, except that this is a citizen's petition just came to us today, so please forgive us for this, this one. just came to us today, so please forgive us for this, this one.
We did the vetting, but I can tell you a lot of the slides you have shown, particularly the ones with numbers, we can't read. Well, I'm just sitting a few rows back.
And some of it has to do with how big we can make things on this screen as well, but we'll work on. Okay, sorry, that was an aside. Yes?
I'm sorry, I have another point of order. I'm not sure how this relates to Article 20.
Okay. A resolution from, a resolution can come from the floor at any point in time. The petitioner has asked to have this resolution come forward in the hopes that it will facilitate what happens next. You can vote for it, you can vote against it, but she's entitled to make this resolution at any point in time.
But shouldn't it be somehow related to the content of the article?
Not necessarily, but it is related to the content of the article because the article is discussing zoning along Route 40. Yes?
Now I can see it a little bit better. Mickey Gary, 51 Carlisle Road. I think where I'm getting a little stuck on, it's not that it's not related to Article 20, it's that it feels like this is very thought out in advance, and while you may not have had enough time to put it in a book or put it in a thing, like Lynn said, I can't read it from back there, I'm trying to digest it.
I can guarantee you that the petitioner has thought about this long in advance, but it has not come to.
Well, let me, let me finish. If the petitioner was knowing that they were going to bring this to town meeting today, it may have been nice to print out a little thing for the rest of the voters in advance, to hand out or to do something, but to expect us to vote on something that I just get to read on the screen right now, and I can't even read, like I said, I can't even read the whole thing. That's not your fault, that's just the nature of the beast here. But if, if the one thing, if this was literally, like a lot of the amendments, written right as they go up here to make that amendment, but this feels very like, you know, they planned it, they wrote it, it would have been nice if they had like created some kind of handout for the voters to actually be able to read legibly. That's.
So I did hand in the resolution this morning.
And, and in an attempt to ensure that in the future people aren't discouraged from bringing citizen's petitions, resolutions, motions, amendments, there's no requirement that these things be provided to the town meeting in advance. This is a very immediate form of democracy, and that's one of the reasons why it's allowed for people to bring these things up at town meeting. Okay, no, that's not necessary. So I don't see any other questions or comments. So all in favor of this resolution? Yes?
Sorry, Juliette Mount, 51 Boston Road. Can you please just reread it for the benefit of folks that are having a hard time reading it? One more time? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Can you read it, Maria? That would be great.
Sure. So actually, before I read it, I'd want to say that it's part of the democratic process. I'm really proud that today is Greek Independence Day, and Greece being the birthplace of democracy has given us this opportunity here and my ability to come here and be able to speak to you all and present this resolution. We have been looking at some growth that's happening along Route 40 and related to the citizen's petition, which is Article 20, to rezone, 7 Carl Thompson Road, citizen's petition to rezone it to residential. We learned a lot from our Planning Board, working with the Planning Board, understanding better how our town management goes. So therefore, I present to you today a resolution for the town of Westford Select Board to work with, the Planning Board to work with the Select Board in order to study and develop a new management strategy for the growth along Route 40. Whereas the town has experienced a significant level of both residential and industrial, commercial growth in the last decade, whereas much of this growth has been along Route 110 and along Route 40. Whereas this development has increasingly given rise to buffer issues between residential zoning and industrial zones and environmental preservation in those areas. So therefore, we'd like to resolve it that request that the Planning Board conduct an evaluation of the current policies regarding buffers between residential and industrial, commercial properties, the sustainable building practices, and the preservation of the environment including wetlands. The goal, to establish a growth management strategy and to update our outdated town master plan to include the study of the Route 40 corridor. And with the hope to ensure that the policy goals regarding growth management and the integration of all the various uses that we have are updated and appropriate for the current conditions.
All right. Now we have the motion having been read and on the floor. So all those in favor of passing this motion, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes, the resolution passes. All right, now we're back to the primary motion. Article 20 is a citizen's petition requesting that the town rezone the property at 7 Carl Thompson Road to the Residence A zoning district. Before making this motion under Article 20, the lead petitioner has asked, oh, sorry. I'm sorry. All right, we're. Before we move, is there a second to that motion? Yes, okay. Now Maria would like to make a motion, another motion, right? Yes?
So pending, because of this resolution and the need to study the Route 40 corridor further, we would like to make a motion of Article 20 to refer to the Planning Board for further study.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay. So now to understand what's going on, the motion itself was originally drafted for a change in zoning that had to do with the buffer between commercial, industrial, and residential. Now that the resolution has passed requesting that the Select Board and the Planning Board work together on this issue, the petitioner is asking that her motion be referred to the Planning Board, to be integrated into that discussional study. Does everybody understand that? Okay. Questions or comments? Does the Planning Board want to comment on the referral motion?
Bonifant again, Planning Board, only that we would welcome the referral.
All right. Seeing no further questions or comments, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of referring the motion under Article 20 to the Planning Board, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. The motion passes, it is not unanimous. Motion under Article 20 is now being referred to the Planning Board. So I apologize if that was confusing, but a lot of this has to do with people coming forward with things they think are important in the community and doing their best to get them before this meeting. And I personally feel I need to be welcoming of that because anyone can do it at any point in time. Okay, Articles 21 and 22 were voted in the consent agenda, so we're now at Article 23. Under Article 20, under Article 23, I have a motion that the town requests that the Select Board take action in calendar year 2023 to enforce the Drew Gardens agricultural preservation restriction on the land at 6668 Boston Road, and that the Select Board work with various parties to implement an agricultural plan at that property, and further that the town appropriate $20,000 from free cash to cover any legal or consulting expenses incurred as a result. Is there a second to that motion? Is Marco Laller here? Marco Laller? Okay. Is anyone from the Agricultural, the Agricultural Commission here? Yes, Mrs. Hardy, are you going to speak to this motion?
I'm not a member of the Agricultural Commission, but I have been working very closely with them for the last year to bring this to the town meeting. So with the moderator's permission, I could present the motion, amended motion that was decided at a meeting, posted meeting of the Agricultural Commission last evening.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that. This is not a citizen's petition, so it's on here no matter what.
So the first item, and I need your advice, Madam Moderators, how to proceed, the actual motion that the Agricultural Commission would like to present to this meeting excludes any reference to an appropriation of money. That's the only change that as the motion.
So that should be an amendment? Motion to amend, yeah.
So on behalf of the Agricultural Commission and the unanimous vote taken at their meeting held at the Cameron Senior Center last evening, I would ask that the words, that the word, that the motion end with the word thereafter, and that the words end further, that the town appropriate the sum of $20,000 from free cash to cover any legal or consulting expenses incurred be deleted from the motion.
Is there a second, is there a second to that motion to amend? All right. Any questions about the motion to amend? All right, let's vote on that first. All in favor of amending the motion under Article 23 to eliminate the last words referring to an appropriation of $20,000, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion to amend passes unanimously. So we're now on the main motion. Ellen, would you like to come forward and present from here?
Actually, if I could refer to Julie Mount of Boston Road, she has on her phone the words that Marco Laller planned to read today, so she has the words from the Agricultural Commission. May I have her come up at the front and read that? I'll come.
Just introduce yourself, Julie. Good afternoon, Juliette Mount, 51 Boston Road. So this is the letter that Mark would have presented, so I'm saying in his words, pardon the third person. Good afternoon, my name is Marco Laller. I live at 105 Concord Road. For the past six years, I have served on the Agricultural Commission, the last four as chair. I stand before you today representing the Agricultural Commission and the Subcommittee on the 6668 Boston Road property, commonly known as Drew Farm or Drew Gardens. I stand before you today to ask you to please cast your vote in favor of warrant Article 23. Before we vote, I am here to explain the article and why I am excited about it. The 6668 Boston Road property has three agricultural preservation restrictions that govern the land. These APRs are crystal clear that the land shall remain in active agricultural use. The APRs are also clear that they grant our Select Board the legal right to pursue remedies that assist the landowner in fulfilling the obligations set forth under the APRs. Warrant Article 23 is asking our town's legislative body, we the voters, to empower the effectuate, our executive body, our Select Board, to ensure the APRs are upheld. Toward that end, we, the Agricultural Commission, have begun developing a 2024 planting plan for the 6668 Boston Road property. Our plan, if implemented, would assist the landowner in meeting the obligations required by the APRs. We have reached out to the owner of 6668 Boston Road, Mr. Abraham Masaladon. Our commission has written him two letters, and I have personally had two conversations with him. My last conversation was earlier this month, and he stated that it might be possible for us to work in partnership.
Let's just keep going.
With him and the use part of the property. As the Agricultural Commission stated in our first letter to Mr. Masaladon, long before you purchased the 6668 Boston property, the land had captured the imagination of the townspeople of Westford. As the primary gateway to our town center, the land spoke to the collective conscious of our residents. The seasons marked time. The agricultural activities reinforced the townspeople's longing for the warmth of a simpler past and simultaneously our hope for an abundant future. Over time, the land has retained its appeal, but with lack of activity and uncertainty over the land's future, there is concern. Our subsequent letter to Mr. Masaladon similarly speaks to the concern many of us have at the lack of activity on that property. The property is nine acres. Thirty-five percent of farms in Massachusetts operate on land that is between 1 and 9 acres. Over one-third of farms in Massachusetts, therefore, are small, if not smaller than 6668 Boston Road. Many of these farms are also governed by agricultural preservation restrictions. By upholding the terms and conditions of the three APRs Westford holds on the Boston Road property, we are strengthening farmland all across the state. But if we ignore the APRs, we risk weakening the farmland and other conservation lands across the state and beyond. The Agricultural Commission has decades' worth of success managing multiple stakeholders at the Graniteville Road site and other parcels in Westford. We oversee the day-to-day operations of a full-time, for-profit farmer, the community garden, a community APR, apiary, and most recently, a young woman's nonprofit called Flowers to Empower that grows cut flowers. We have also assisted several Boy and Girl Scout troops on various projects at the site. We are proud that the Graniteville site is considered one of the most beloved places in Westford. We hope to use our expertise and work with the Select Board and the landowner to uphold the APRs, utilize the land for agriculture, and help foster another place where community, land, food, and friendship mix and thrive in a beloved place. Of course, there is no guarantee that the landowner will work with us, so other strategies may be required. Nevertheless, by supporting warrant Article 23, the town will be sending a powerful message that it wants the land farmed, and we are taking constructive steps to see this happen. A yes vote upholds the law. A yes vote supports agriculture. A yes vote supports the town's Select Board to use its power inherent in the agricultural preservation restrictions to ensure the land stays in active agricultural use. Please support these efforts by voting yes on warrant Article 23. Before we vote on warrant Article 23, however, the Agriculture Commission made their amendments.
We already took care of that, so.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I.
That's all right.
I think we're good.
Great. Yes? Thank you, Juliette. And thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marco Laller. I live at 105 Concord Road, and I'm deeply humbled here this evening, or this afternoon, and I want to thank Julie, I couldn't have said it better myself. If it's any consolation, I was planting pasture grass, so there you have it. Please support Article 23. Thank you, Ray.
Get the microphone to my right.
Jeff Castor, 110 Providence Road. This resolution is asking for the Board to do something that it already has the power to do, is that correct?
Somebody from the Select Board address that?
Thank you, Tom Clay, Vice Chair. We do have this authority, but I do respect the Agricultural Commission's interest in getting a voice of the community and hearing the voice of town meeting on this issue, so we welcome, welcome to hear the outcome of this.
And the next question at that mic?
Bob Carter, Nutting Road. Unless I missed something, did we find out how the Select Board recommended their vote on this?
Hello again. So we've had a discussion over here earlier. Because this is structured as really a voice of the room, you giving us your feedback on how you think we should act, we decided it was not appropriate for us to take a position on what you should tell us. And so we have not, formally not taken a position on this, but again, look forward to hearing the voice of the room.
But after the previous question here. But if the previous question here was, the select board already has this authority. Does the select board, I think a vote is appropriate whether they approve this motion from the agricultural commission. I'd like to hear what the vote is in the select board. Because you already have this authority to enforce the APRs.
I think he's already indicated that the select board decided not to take a position on this because it was telling them to do something.
Then I make a motion to dismiss.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to dismiss. And that's one moment. All right, just, sorry, just kidding. Instructions on the motion to dismiss. The motion to dismiss takes precedence. So we're now, is there, there was a second. So we're now discussing a motion to dismiss and all we'll be talking about is whether or not we should dismiss this article. So will folks who have questions or comments to be made about dismissing this article, stay at the microphone and the rest of you just step back, please, if you don't have that question. George?
George Murray, 14 Haywood Road. I recommend strongly against dismissing this article. The article says two things. One, this guy's waiting us out. There's going to be a restaurant on that property if we don't really pursue our rights as a town to enforce this APR. Secondly, the article says, "Select board, do your job."
Any other comments on the motion to dismiss? Dave?
I think George Murray has said it succinctly.
Then no need to repeat it.
If I may, I was involved when we got a committee together. I had been on a select board and we chose to buy that property because he wanted to preserve it because it was the entryway to Westford. And I think what this meeting is trying to say is we need some leadership from the select board and we want you to lead and let's do something that's in the best interest of the Westford community.
Thank you. To my left?
Greg Flom, Corey Hill Road. I oppose dismissing the motion. I think the question was, why do we have a motion to tell the select board to do something that they already have the ability to do? And I, the select board has many competing priorities. They're not able to do everything that they possibly could do. And this is our way of telling the select board whether this is important to the town or not. So I oppose dismissing the motion.
Are you speaking to the motion to dismiss? Okay.
Bob Messmeyer, 139 Main Street. I've been a member of this town since 1985. When I moved here, there were no stoplights in the town. There was no grocery store. I've seen a lot of changes. It seems to me, every time this comes up at town meeting, we're holding on to something from the past that doesn't quite fit. We have also heard in past town meetings that this ground cannot be done, produced economically farmed, right, by people that were in the business. It's time that we pay attention to what reality that we're facing. If we want to have control of this property, I would suggest we need to negotiate a purchase of it and that way we can do what we wish. Otherwise, we're trying to force someone else to do something with their property.
All right, we're talking about the motion to dismiss only. So let's not go to the merits of the underlying motion if we can stay with the motion to dismiss. Madonna?
I oppose the motion to dismiss. And I do that because I happened to be one of those on the select board at the time that we put these restrictions on. And I really think that we did it for a special cause and I hope that we continue to.
Thank you. Emily, are you speaking to the motion to dismiss? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead, yes.
At past town meetings, we've, um, we haven't put forward articles like this, uh, warrant articles. We've had resolutions that have directed the board of selectmen to, you know, engage in a particular activity. And I think this is better suited as a resolution to direct the selectmen to take action for authority they already have. I think a warrant article oversteps what's required and what's needed and it's consistent with past practice. So I would be willing to turn this into a resolution, but I think clearly, in my viewpoint, a warrant article is unnecessary.
Emily?
Emily Taylor, 9 Texas Road. I was on the original committee with Bill Harmon and Dave Earl and Elizabeth Michaud that obtained the development rights and the APR on this, these three parcels. I am against dismissing this. This is like the clearest gathering that can make their will on behalf of the town known to the leadership of the town. Mr. Masaladon is not here. There's not any other proposal. I think if we vote to keep this article, keep this article and then vote on the article, we're sending a really strong message that the people of this town really want this to be only agriculture. That's the position that we're taking going into the future.
Okay, I'm going to ask again. Let's try to stick with the motion to dismiss. Why you think we should either dismiss this article or continue discussing it? That's what we're talking about. Do you want to address that?
Bob Crankworth, 15 Boston Road. I'm against dismissing this article. It's ridiculous.
Julia?
Called to vote.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote anyway, so we don't need to go through the motions of that. So if you vote yes on the motion to dismiss, you will be voting to dismiss this article and not have any further discussion of it. It will be gone. If you vote no, then we'll go back to the main motion and discuss it further and then take a vote. So all in favor of dismissing this article, say aye. Loud only counts once. All opposed, say nay. Okay, the opposed nays have it, so the article is not dismissed. So now we're going back to the main motion. And are there any other comments or questions? I see someone at the middle microphone.
David Sherrill, 44 Village View Road. If town meeting and the board takes no action on this, is the APR in any kind of jeopardy? That is, apparently the land should be in active agricultural use. It isn't. Does that pose jeopardy to the APR?
Can somebody address the requirements of the APR? And yeah. We'll have town council address that. It does, it sounds like a legal question.
Thank you through you, Madam Moderator. So there are three APRs on the subject property. They're all essentially the same for purposes of this discussion and they all contain an affirmative covenant that the owner is required to keep the property in active agricultural use. The select board has the authority and the jurisdiction to enforce those covenants. And what you're doing here today is making a recommendation to the board as to whether or not you want to see them take that enforcement action. An affirmative vote here doesn't necessarily require them to take that action. That's still up to them. But if they choose not to take enforcement at this time, for whatever reason they have, that doesn't mean that they forever waive their ability to take enforcement in the future. So that covenant remains in place whether the board decides to enforce the APRs now or at some point in the future. And they do not give that up if they choose not to act at this moment.
Thank you, Greg.
Ask a second question?
Uh, let's, let's let the people behind you ask questions and you can go to the back of the line, not the room.
Ellen Hardy, 39 Main Street. Elizabeth Michaud, who chaired the original Drew Acquisition APR Committee back in the 1990s, no longer lives in Westford, but she is here and she would like to address the meeting. I would like to make a motion to allow Elizabeth to speak, but it's up to this body and take a two-thirds vote at the town meeting to have a non-voter.
So the motion is to have a non-resident, non-registered voter speak, address the meeting. Is there a second to that motion? Okay. This is a two-thirds vote. So let's try it by voice first. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. I think that's, that's two-thirds.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Michaud. I now live in Stowe and I had the privilege of chairing the Drew Farms Committee in the late 1990s, which established the, put before the town and the town approved the purchase of the APR restrictions along with the development rights of that property. And I would just like to say that I think it's important to enforce the APRs. I think that the decisions that this town town meeting has taken in the past to prevent uses of that property, which would have violated the APRs, have been wise decisions. It's important that APRs that are supposed to be in perpetuity be maintained in perpetuity. And the fact that someone other than the town owns this property does not mitigate the fact that the current owner apparently purchased the property thinking that the town could be persuaded to weaken the APR and allow the building of a restaurant. And the town has on repeated votes resisted doing that. So I think that this is a wise motion and advising the selectmen to enforce the APR is a good thing to do. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Elizabeth. To my left?
Hi, 34 Ford Village Road, Jim Coaches. I, I think we've all heard this a few town meetings now and it's all played out on the town Facebook pages and everywhere else ad nauseam. Can move to vote?
Okay, we have a motion to move the question. Is there a second? All in favor, that's not debatable. Majority vote, all in favor of moving the question, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, that passes. So we'll now go to the vote on Article 23. If you're in favor of passing Article 23, you'll vote aye. If you're opposed, you'll vote nay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. I would say that passes by a majority, but it's not unanimous. All right. Under Article 24, I have a motion that the town authorize the select board to secure one additional alcohol beverage retail license to be exercised by NAB's One Stop Shop Inc. located at 60 Brookside Road. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, thank you. Uh, Matt Farber. Is Matt Farber here? Oh, there he is. Uh, Matt is the petitioner under this citizen's petition article. He is not a town resident, so he will also have to have your permission to speak and present his motion. Can I, is there a motion for Matt to speak to the meeting? Is there a second? Okay. Here you go, Matt. Oh, sorry. It's getting late. All in favor of Matt being allowed to address the meeting, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. That sounds unanimous. Now you can speak.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Farber. I'm the manager of NAB's One Stop Shop on Brookside Road. I'm here today to ask for your support to obtain a beer and wine license for our business. First, I would like to discuss our commitment to the town of Westford. We're a family-owned small business that has been operating in the town for over 20 years. We are fully invested in the community and are committed to staying in Westford and serving our loyal customers. To truly encompass our store name, NAB's One Stop Shop, we want to provide a one-stop shopping experience for our customers. Our loyal customers are asking us to expand our business to include beer and wine. We have always been a business that has prided ourselves on providing excellent and honest customer service. To that end, we are fully prepared to expand our product selection and make the necessary adjustments throughout the store to successfully accommodate these products. The last couple of years with COVID, inflation and other economic turmoil has taken a toll on all businesses. With a beer and wine license, we would be able to bring in additional revenue and potentially hire additional staffing. We will handle our new beer and wine license in a responsible manner as we have demonstrated with other products over the last 20 years. Our point-of-sale system is fully equipped to address and handle all town and state laws. As we do with all our age-restricted products, we require a scan with a valid driver's license. Without this scan, the sale cannot proceed. We would apply the same technology to beer and wine. Our staff is fully trained on ID scanning. And our point-of-sale system is also equipped with technology to restrict beer and wine sales on certain days and times automatically. We also intend to take advantage of the TIPS training from Massachusetts, so our staff will be fully educated regarding all laws and regulations. I'd be happy to answer any and all questions and thank you for the opportunity to speak here with you today.
Are there questions from the audience? To my left, Mike?
Yeah, just a comment. Michael Bonifat, 3 Hadley Road. Matt and his family have been great neighbors, great folks in NAB. Just to point out also that Brookside Convenience that was over there now is closed. So there is a, there is a need for this in that area.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I live on 154 Plain Road. I've been a customer of NAB for the last 15 years. I urge this party to support the honor.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, Steve Stone, Steve Stone, Moore Road. Years ago, when I moved to town in 1983, you could go in there and get a prescription and a bottle of brandy, whatever medication you need. Okay, okay. Why can't it be like that again? Matt runs a first-rate operation. His security and everything, his surveillance. It's, I mean, he stopped by. He runs a fabulous place and I fully support this. I think that's all for. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments, let's take a vote. This also requires a two-thirds vote. Let's try it with a voice vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 24, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes by two-thirds. It is not unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay, first of all, thank you to all of you who've been here all day long. It's really important that people participate and I really appreciate your being here. This concludes the business of the 294th Annual Town Meeting for the town of Westford. Thanks for your help, your time and your participation in this very direct form of government. Please feel free to contact me if you have any suggestions for the process. And please remember to return all your clickers. Return your clickers before you leave. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor of adjourned? Say aye. All opposed, say nay. It's unanimous.